I know he was gonna do an in-person and a Zoom hybrid thing or try.
Yeah.
Morning.
Morning.
Welcome.
Mark already got the email to me.
You guys are.
Good morning.
Morning.
Might have to adjust our camera Jake, I think you got bumped again. We're gonna be half in and half out of the video. Nothing.
Morning.
Oh, yeah.
Very sad that it didn't make enough. He usually does that to me.
They had bumped stuff yesterday because Richard sat out at first. Is that better?
Yep. All right, whenever you're ready.
Okay, I have a couple items on your consent agenda and I'll let Jeff go with the first one. You know, a couple of reestablishments. We have reestablishment of Park Place at Wish Ram. What it is, is we never actually accepted this road formally, this section that runs all the way to our park. That's highlighted. I mean, it was granted as part of the developed establishment of Wish Ram kinda cloudily and the county never actually established it. We have actually maintained it though and done some work through there. So it came up when PUD asked for, but can we put, because we also want a parcel out there too, around the park. And they asked, because they have a lift station there, can we put fencing in the right of way? So when we checked it, like, well, there's a problem.
Sounds like yes. It's not ours, we don't care.
Exactly. Well, okay, we don't know who owns it. So legitimately, we have the rights. It's just we never formally established it. So therefore, we can't give work within the right of way utility permits to something that is not within our road log. So that's what this process does, is to put that last section in. All right, item number six is a final acceptance for the small works contract between Frank Kearney and Clicktack County. And this is for the guard rail repair project this past winter. Item number seven is a settlement agreement between the county and SDS. And this is for about three acre easement along Panic Nick Road. So the end of Panic Nick was vacated in the seventies, but we continued to maintain it to the end because there's someone that lives back there. So this is to formally establish that. And so we have rights.
And a turnaround.
What's that?
You had a turnaround.
And a turnaround, yeah, yeah, yeah. So that's what we're working toward as well. So. Item number eight is a request for concurrence to award the bid for the Roosevelt Grade Road paving project to Interstate Concrete and Asphalt Company. Item number nine is a request from the county for the 2020 non-discrimination accomplishments and goals. And this is another requirement that we have to do annually as part of our standard assurances form that that they require that we submit. So we're working on the plan. So we signed a plan before they sent it back. And then we changed the form. So I'm working on that and that'll come in, actually, we'll finish that this week. And it doesn't have to be signed, but now the standard assurances that you have have to be signed every year. So you'll see it again next year. On the construction side, the annual striping contact phase two is on hold until we finish all our chip sealing. And they'll come back in the fall. Old Mountain Road contractor still roughing in ditches. I think they're hammering out some more hard rock areas and then building sub grades. So they'll continue to do that for quite a while. Grant funded Edgeline project. So first, this is where the equipment burned up first. They got any piece of equipment, but then getting the materials from Texas to here is nearly impossible because there are no trucks to haul. So they ended up putting the material on a rail car and so it's on its way. Let's see. Nothing new on any of the other projects except for the West Darlin Road paving project. So we've sent our contracts and bossed the contractor and wait for him to send them back. Courtney Road Updates, I brought Seth along. So we finally got word back from Bryce and Seth's gonna maybe give you an update on Fred Haney and the PUD's project.
So what I heard back from Bryce is that they don't have a complete application at this point. They're still waiting for some plans and locations where the lines are gonna go. And they're hoping to have a complete application in two weeks. He did say that after they have that, then they'll go to the public notice period, which I think is a 20 day notice. But he didn't mention whether it needed to go back through the tribe, which is a separate notice period that I think happens before the public. And then he was hoping to start their review process this fall. So I've been back in contact with the PUD and suggests we look at some alternative routes to get that that line moved in the meantime. So it doesn't affect our project.
Okay, well, that's not unexpected. Disappointing, but it's not unexpected.
Yeah.
As far as the, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, so they have a ways to go yet.
Okay.
Quite a ways, you haven't even started it.
Right. Yeah, they basically haven't even started.
Yeah.
You know, but they're hoping to review it sometime this fall. It's someone that speaks daily to Mr. Haney, that of course is gonna be a problem.
Yes.
Yeah. I I think there is some things that he can do that are, because I have counseled him to really look at the regulations as far as what you have to have reviewed, what you don't. There are some functions that, and if you, my experience with the with the scenic carry office, if you ask them if something needs to be reviewed, everything needs to be reviewed. And you, if you, you know, if you want to change the color of the shirt you're wearing, you probably should go through review. But there is some, there are definitely activities that are either small enough that they're categorically exempt from review or they're, you know, repair or maintenance or other categories that may be. So I've I've suggested to be. I don't believe so. So. But that's his part of it, not the PUD's part of it as far as the PUD obviously will have to go through as a as a governmental agency, they have to go through the
process.
Whole process.
I don't know how much.
Yeah.
That is.
Okay. Okay.
All right. On our other projects, nothing new on the design side other than what's listed here. Maintenance side, East End Crew. They're placing the asphalt grindings that we removed from out here in Court Street out at Esteb. And that'll be a route of a good, better, much better route to our quarry out in Esteb. And then they're also grading some roads out east part of the county. And helping with the final chip sealing on the west side this week. So the west end, that's pretty much what they're doing. And then they'll finish this week. So we'll complete all of our chip sealing by the end of the week. Which is good.
Yeah. Yeah, before the first of August.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Let's see, facility side, the work on the building, they're starting to set forms for curb and gutter on Court Street. They're excavating for one last wall on the backside in the alley. And there's a gutter, the concrete gutter that goes back there and curve to keep the water away from our building. They'll work on that. And then there's a little bit more storm drainage to put in. We ran into last week, they ran into a problem. They excavated to set the last catch basin on the corner at Grant and Court and discovered that there was a hidden line that wasn't identified and a catch basin that the city over at some point in time had buried and just put a steel plate over it. And which was in a different location than where we had thought it connected. So it's a lot more work. And so what we're gonna do, since we're kind of redoing the whole corner anyway. And so we're changing the plans so we don't install stuff we're gonna throw away. And then we'll fix it when we build our parking lots next spring. So right now it'll continue to work as it has for, you know, who knows how long. And we'll fix it when we do the parking lots. Let's see, inside the elevator is kind of one of the new things. They actually have worked it, moving it up and down temporarily by generator power. So that's all, almost all put together and installed.
I think they put that in the shaft, do they come in pieces and assemble or?
Lots of boxes of parts, yeah, and they just assembled and welded and and put it all together. So. So that's coming together. They're actually putting down flooring, the final flooring in our storage room. So they're kind of protected pretty much. And the sheet rockers are kind of finishing up in the stairways and then the touch up locations that they have to finalize. Painters are mostly all done, except for all the touch up that'll happen.
So when, as far as the electrical, as far as their cell phone generator or?
Yeah.
So when they can get the, how close are they to getting, not that it really matters, I'm just curious. As far as, because I know, so they can get on to the the building supplying its own power.
Right, they tried a couple of weeks ago to get vinyl, but there's more work. The electricians are actually the one sub that's a bit behind. And then they had a bunch of people that are off this week. And hopefully they'll be back as soon as possible. The the low voltage sub is onsite, they didn't have to leave. So they're continuing to wire, which is, there's a lot of low voltage cable that needs to be pulled in and terminated. So, but the power, they have a few more things to finish and they've they've been working Saturdays as well. So that's the critical path to try and get that, the power on.
Good.
Let's see. Courthouse entry. Yeah, we're, should finish up all the railing on the east entrance, be ready to open that up. We're gonna, we're also placing stucco on the east entrance. They'll come back and paint everything as once, because they have a sub that comes in and paints. They would want to bring them over from that area once. So they'll do that. South entry is now open through the jail again. They placed the sidewalk spin and put in. And we'll be closing that once we get the the main south entry will close once we get the east entry open. And we're done in the basement or in the vault. We actually have seemed to have just about as much storage as we had, even though we closed off a big section of it. Because it's it's well organized now. We put in shelving and everything. So everybody has their section or not everybody, but the people that are in there. And I think there's four groups.
Did we have any cracking? With that heat?
No, we have not had any cracking as of yet.
Yeah.
No. They kept it pretty, they kept an eye on it. They're working really strange shifts just because, so they seem to have people here all the time. Because they have a crew that works during the day and then a crew that works in the evening too. So they missed it, it kept it covered. Up at the fairgrounds, we're kind of scrambling to get things ready. There's a few items that we have to take care of, the new PA system forum and then all the normal, normal things that we need to get set up. And other last minute things that the fair board has asked for. So we're working on those things up there. Radio update. We're actually working with Lauren. I want to go out tomorrow because we have archaeologists scheduled to go out next Wednesday and do the site survey. So we can at least get that going. And at that same time, then we'll also work through what our agreement's gonna be. But what I want to keep moving forward with you. I did hear from archaeologists, though there are no known sites in that area, so that's good news. Just a heads up on Knight Road. So one of the solar companies, biologist is gonna go out. They've asked for permission to work within the right of way, so they'll be parking along the road. So a call could come in, but that's what's going on. So they do have permits.
And they're doing what now?
They're a wetland biologist, so they're looking for wetlands, identifying them.
From the road right away.
On in one location then where there's a stream that crosses, so they want to identify it and within the right of way. And I'm sure other properties as well, but they have to get a permit to be in our right of way. So. And they did. Remember the dim thing? Go ahead. Oh, our guy that runs the firearms training facility for us has, I don't want to get into the whole thing, the medical thing, but he has a medical could be a potential medical issue. They don't know for sure. And if it becomes that, they have to do something immediately. How quickly, it basically has a knee replacement. And they think it may be infected. And if it's infected, they have to take it out. That's how they fix that. And if they do that, then, you know, when he gets the results back, they'll immediately take him in and do it. So what that says is we'll need, we kind of need somebody and the wings just in case. Temporary, temporary hire to fill that. And we have somebody that's been there helping and everything, you know, very, you know. But we have to have approval to do that if we need to.
How long do you think it would be for?
Probably three months, three to four months. He doesn't seem to think that and he'll still be attached. But I mean, you're not gonna get around very much. I don't know how long.
I wouldn't imagine this would be a budget hit because if he's not getting paid.
Right, exactly. It would be the one and the same. We wouldn't have two people. We would only have one. So it wouldn't change anything. It would just change basically somebody on there. Yeah, that's all.
Seems fair, seems reasonable.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, and I would, if he ends up having to have the knee redone, yeah, it's three months would be.
Reasonable.
Reasonable.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I'm not telling my wife that's.
Yeah. Well, I mean, yeah.
Since she just had hers done not too long ago, that's a story she doesn't need to hear.
No. That doesn't mean not three, I mean.
I mean, to get them replaced, that it could be bad.
Yeah.
That they have to go.
Oh, yeah, that's that's a bad, that's bad, bad juju if you get an infection in there.
I don't know how you would function without the knee.
Yeah. Well, they just. I don't know. Well.
I don't want to, I don't want to fight that. Moving on, that's right. Does that conclude your?
Yeah. Yeah, thank you. Questions, comments for?
Yeah, there's still some, I'm gonna be hearing some stuff about a new organization on the west end dealing with Lakeview Road and Northwestern Lake Road about speeds and traffic, wantin' traffic study and all that danger. There's a lot of, there's a lot of traffic on it, a lot of people walking. Their dogs and then you got the big buses and now log trucks and everything else. So I'm sure when she reaches out, I'll get her in contact with you. But I'm guessing it's gonna be the same thing like we did out there in Trout Lake earlier.
Okay. Yeah, we'll maybe get started with the speed study.
And then the other one that I was about was is there's some complaining online that the lake road got closed off going out to in Trout Lake. And that might be just because DLD and our lands are closed.
Yes.
And so that sign went up for that.
Yes.
Yeah, you're hearing a lot of people complaining. So when they plan to close the road for permanent, get ready.
Right. Okay. Thank you.
Do we have, I got a couple of things. One is related to the DNR closure of their lands. I do have, there's a Friday, I've got a Zoom meeting with the Forest Services hosting. It's just so the agencies as, because of extreme fire danger are it is likely all the agencies are gonna follow suit and we are gonna see basically all public lands are gonna be closed. Recreation in around. The question was asked, well, what about county owned stuff? But we have, like, we don't really have any, our only recreational properties, public lands that we have are parks.
Yeah.
I mean, we have some public land, I mean, that we happen to own, but we don't manage large, you know, tracts of lands. I don't really see this as, other than, I'm gonna participate just to know what's going on so we can. Because what, if, the thing I'm concerned about is if it's almost better if it's all the agencies. Because if it's, you know, DNR's closed theirs, but these folks haven't, then everybody just moves over. And then there's all this confusion about what's open, what's not. And it's very reminiscent of the land closures early in the pandemic when they, you know, did that. And it was, it was really confusing to people about what was open and what wasn't.
Right.
And so I was, I'll, if, if, so I'm not mistaken, we don't really have anything besides our parks. And I don't know that we would consider closing those to public.
We have some, so we purchased property along the Clickitat after the floods. So their, their access to the to the river is there. And so then we have mile one, River Mile One, which is Forest Service at the end and where we access. So that's another one.
So that, that one, we potentially could have some conflict there.
Yeah.
Because there's, yeah, if we, if ours is open and theirs is closed, but we're, you know, they're obviously using ours to how are they gonna, oh, you stepped over this rock or book and now you're on the other.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, that's one. The other, the county properties that we purchased after the flood in, like, ninety-six, they're, you know, they're just a lot that goes from one forty-two to the river.
Right, yeah.
Okay. Yeah, and those. They're not marked. Now, those could see a few more people if everything else gets closed.
Okay. Okay, that's good to know. And then if you can, I am still attempting to have a conversation about Old Mountain Road.
Thank you.
So I'm hopeful, I have another route, I'll say, potentially. So describe, how is that gonna affect, I just want to be really, so that I understand, so I can, I can really advocate for how this is unnecessary.
If they go to a level four, it not only affects Old Mountain, our crews essentially are shut down, which means we can't do anything outside of, you know, working the shop and that kind of.
Right.
But Old Mountain stops.
Right.
And then it just sits basically vacant until until they lift it. I don't know how watering it periodically would fit in, you know, I, that would be something we have to discuss. But right now, when we talk to them, every year we've talked to them, asked for, they say there's no waivers, you get nothing, period. You're just done when they're so then essentially it sits there until whenever that gets lifted, then the contractor goes back to work. If it's long enough, essentially it could be a winner over project and we know those cost us money.
Right. Everything costs us.
Would this restriction also affect things like Darlin and Roosevelt or just?
We were told we could pave, is what we were told. We could actually pave.
You just couldn't do the improvement stuff and get in the ditches and.
Exactly, you can't get outside of the road present. Yeah, so at Old Mountain, we basically grubbed. Yeah, that gave you the right of way, it's dirt, that's what we're working on.
Right, that's.
There's no.
Well, and plus, my argument has been, all of the equipment that you would have on site are the thing, are the exact same things that you would have.
Right.
If you had an issue as far as, you know, cats and
Water trucks.
Water trucks and all of, it's like, it is a, it really is a, it's already
It's a fire line.
It's a fire line. And we're gonna pave a little bit.
Yeah.
But, and so you would think those sort of activities could, we should be able to wave.
I don't think they understand. I, I just think somebody just rolled us all in because we never used to close now.
Right.
Never until just recently and I don't think.
And how were we, how do we know we have to?
We've talked to DNR.
I know, but did we ask DNR or did DNR inform?
No, DNR years ago, and then we used to get waivers.
Okay.
So we would just get waivers and they said, okay. And this year they said, no waivers.
Okay.
We, we go to them every year at the beginning, the contractors would go to them. We would tell them, because we were told, I can't remember what year it was, but all of a sudden, you guys have to follow the same guidelines as the timber industry. It's been like twenty twelve. Yeah, something like that. And then since then, we've been doing that. We get waivers every year, but this year, we always tell the contractors, get your waiver early, don't wait because we're not gonna help, you know, we're not gonna give you non-working days if you don't have it. But this year, we didn't get it.
So again, though, who and who up there is saying no waivers? Because that's, that's just ridiculous.
I can't remember who we contacted. I can get that information, but it's the same people we contact every year. We actually contact Ellensburg to get the waivers. But they said that being how Olympias came down and there is no waivers.
Like, that's what I'm trying to talk to.
Are you talking, oh, you're gonna talk to Hillary about it?
Okay. If anybody can wave the wand.
I just don't think she knows.
I don't think she knows.
I really don't think she understands. Nobody's put it to us.
And I'm, I'm having difficulty getting the path to the
Right.
To the top.
Because that would mean the state would
There's very good people there. Say that.
They'll probably be
Access.
Right.
Just like we do sometimes. Is that right, Eddie?
Well, thanks, Dave.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you so much.
Okay. Anything else for these? No. And I guess we're done.
Go forth.
All right, good work. Thank you, Rio. Well, hello, Ms. Frye.
Hi.
Get out.
You're welcome. You are on the phone.
Is it bright in here? I mean, you're used to that dark little Heidi bowl there. We can, we can get the lights off if you.
Oh, yeah. I forgot about that. Brenda, you want to go here?
Sure.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna ask.
Yeah.
I can clear up too, Casey.
Okay, that's before the crowd. Morning Commissioners. Good morning. Before you go on, we have, since we have a, we have a visiting dignitary.
We do.
A former dignitary. Was there something you needed?
I used to be somebody.
Yeah, well.
Used to be.
Just here for a visit.
I got dropped off and you guys are daycare and you just
Oh. Good. Well.
And I miss, I miss the road department.
They're always so fun.
Yeah. Yeah. Well, well. Carry on, all right.
Good morning Commissioners.
Good morning.
So add to our agenda this morning. So we'll start off with a request from the auditor's office and then we'll go into executive session at the end of our presentation on the public works to discuss an issue with you. So just keep getting up to speed on the changes. So the auditors, as you know, has been in the internal eternal search for Chief Raimondo. She's in serious discussions with an applicant that they recently interviewed that has almost twenty years of public sector finance director level experience and well as four years as budget manager, three years as a controller at nonprofit environment. Bachelor's degree in accounting, master's degree in finance, has a CPA. It's, the license has last, elapsed in another state and she's in the process of getting that reinstated and transferred to this state. So the auditor would like to be able to extend an offer at the senior accountant two, remember, we posted three positions, senior accountant one, senior accountant two, or the chief accountant. So it's grade seventy-one, seventy-two and seventy-four. Since the person doesn't currently possess CPA license, we'd like to offer this person a senior accountant two position range seventy-two, step ten. And then once they are able to get that license reinstated, then they would be eligible for promotion to the senior accountant position of which we put them at range seventy-four, step seven. So the motivations on this person to get that license reinstated for them to move to that, to the left, to the level that they easily qualify for. The seventy-two is Easily qualify for. The seventy-two is a preferred CPA, the senior accountant two, the chief accountant is required. So uh, puts a little motivation on them to do what they're already in the process of doing.
She says she's been, she realized it lapsed and she's like, eh, I'll work at it, you know, but she said, you know, that'd be a. The incentive.
Truth is, we get the benefit of someone with CPA experience and over twenty years of finance director level. Whether they have the CPA or not, so they don't choose to move to the higher pay.
Where are they coming from?
A city, a city in another state.
Within fifty miles or within a hundred miles?
Yes. Oh, the state or the city? No.
There's only one state within fifty miles.
They have roots here.
Okay, that's, I think is the, I suspect is what.
Close enough, probably a couple hundred miles, maybe.
That's the draw for coming here is the family roots.
Yeah. So we would ask for verbal permission to um. Proceed with discussions with this uh, person.
Believe it's a unicorn.
I think it might be.
Okay, that's the going price for a unicorn.
And it's within a posted, this is actually step seven, we posted it all the way, all the way through.
Yeah, and this person is going to take a significant pay cut, so. By coming here, so that's the other thing, they knew that when they applied.
So they won't be paying. Income tax for leaving.
Narrow to down. Okay, yeah, yeah.
Thank you. Yeah, I do too, thank you. So, okay, I'm out of here. Back up to my Google sheet.
Casey, we'll start off with HR today.
Yep.
DRS and PEP rates.
Yep, so uh, just to give you a little update, so DRS rates typically come out in July. Um, they did decrease this year for the employer and the employee contributions for.
Why?
Um, I don't ask, I don't know. Um, this is the first time I've seen a decrease in PEP contribution rates in a long time though. Um, and so the employees, right, the employee contribution rates. For PERS two decreased from seven point nine percent to six point uh, six point three six percent. Um, and then the employer contributions also decreased um, with PERS two and PERS three, so.
So it could be this, PEP went down, right? So it could be.
So PEP rates for us will come out in typically the end of August. Um, the composite rates for the state agencies did decrease. Um, for January first to July of twenty twenty-one, and so hopefully that will. Um, kind of follow suit for us, but we won't know what our rates for twenty twenty-one or twenty twenty-two will be until. The end of August typically is when they come out, so.
And it could have been that it went down for the state because during the COVID, a lot of folks, and this is true, hospitals in this region did not go to doctors. During the COVID, you know, it was harder to get in, and so a lot of people put off. Going to doctors and a lot of elective surgeries were put off, so.
Well, there's switching to telehealth too, so that's cheaper then.
So it could be this year, those elective surgeries took place and next year the rates will go.
Like Pat, that's an explanation for me for PEP and not DRS.
Right.
DRS makes no sense. The only time I've ever seen that was in. I think oh nine, was the state adjusted those so that they didn't have to make the contributions to balance their budget. And so, because it's, you know, the state is, and all the agencies are big employer, I mean, that's, it was millions and millions of dollars, and so they just sort of. Said, oh, we're just not gonna pay that this year, or we're gonna lower it, and that's how they balance, or we're just gonna shove it off into the future.
Yeah, well, and I think Jen will have numbers for you.
Yeah, and I, oh, we, yeah, we've already been talking.
In just the employer contributions for the DRS.
Yeah, well.
So. The budget impact would be a difference of roughly three hundred and thirty thousand dollars.
Right.
With two percent decrease, and I think it's safe to say your assumption would be accurate, considering everything that has transpired with.
Right.
So the state's saying here, yeah, so.
Right, that's, that's the only caution when we're doing the budget, this is, it's, it's like an airplane in Dalsport, it's not a real, it's. Like, don't count on it because that's, I think it's, it's an anomaly, and so, it's a nice anomaly for this year, but for us, but.
Yeah, and these rates will be affected, well, were effective July first, twenty twenty-one to June.
So, I mean, that's, so in a sense, the savings will get split out across two budget years, so. Okay.
Yep, so just to give you an update on our student summer interns, um, we did hire six interns that will be. Um, all of them have started working, um, some of them will uh, finish their internship. The middle of August because they will be moving on to college. Um, but yes, we have two in solid waste, one here in Goldendale, one in uh, White Salmon. We have one in emergency management, we have one in public health, one in adult probation and one in planning. And one of.
Oh, that's who that is in planning.
Yes, one of the interns is a return um, from two years ago.
That was bring your kid to work day.
Nope, that is our student summer intern and yes, and.
I'm not allowed to ask.
And so just to give you an update on that, so. Um, any questions regarding any of that? No, okay. Um, job postings, we have our usual um. Job postings for senior services with van drivers and in home maids, um, and then we have our other current postings for um, the clerical position in public health. Um, our deputy prosecuting attorney and the PA's office, along with our victim witness coordinator in the PA's office. Um, and then the usual summer labor interns or, excuse me, engineers, and so.
So in terms of recruitment, um, there is a county in this state that is offering sign-on bonuses. Or hard to recruit positions and along with that comes, you know, an agreement and, and. With that, with the employee written agreement that, you know, if they stay so long, they, they get the other half, if they don't, they gotta pay it back, it's. Pretty common in the private sector. Um, I've asked the PA, so he's reviewing it. He's gonna actually contact that county and, and talk to them. But I'm just wondering if in fact we can do it pending legal review, or the Commissioners interested in seeing a draft policy. Um, that would. You know, possibly help us recruit some um, limited high-level positions that were. For instance, in the PA's office trying to attract deputies.
How would we um, determine what ones would be eligible? Well, say high level, you know, in this county, I have departments that, you know, every, every person is a absolute essential to the. Functioning of the department.
And there's a process that you've seen this uh, in the draft, we've prepared, and that county goes through HR and HR determines uh. Whether it's a difficult to recruit, you know, based on, for instance, the one Brenda, these films have been open by fifteen months, at least. A problem and, you know, kind of exhausted all of our, all the things that we can do, um. So there would be a process to go through HR and then we would bring it forward to the board. That county, I think, has three, three positions they've identified, and I think it's three thousand to five thousand. That's the, is the range of the bonus they're putting, so it would be limited, it would be for certain level positions. And it would be based on difficulty or uh, failure to be able to attract someone. So it'd be fairly high bar that would be set.
Do those usually work for middle management and higher level positions?
It seems like a fairly low number, if you're gonna move to the middle of nowhere.
They work on the driving sector.
Eighty thousand dollars, three thousand isn't gonna make a difference for any of the other.
Yeah, I mean, if their, if their salaries within three to five thousand, it might make the difference, some, I mean. Um, it works in the private sector for certain positions, I'm not sure how common it is in the public sector, but um, recruitment is. Difficult now, will be impossible in the next three years, um, based on all the trends coming out, cause um, certain positions are in high demand. Across all spectrums.
Nonprofits, they're not making like workers anymore.
I mean, we did something similar, it did work, but we tried it in law enforcement where we were trying to encourage. Um, residency in certain communities in the county that had, and so we offered a, a bonus. Um, and. Nobody took it.
Right.
Uh, apparently, but I don't know if that's because it was bargained in the. In the CBA, but yeah, we've, I, I think, you know, in the past, we've been told. It may be, it may be legal, but it's unenforceable, meaning if the person comes, takes the money and then next week says, damn, I'm done. You can't, you know, I'm gonna give it that, how, how are we, we have no way to.
Yeah, if you're only dealing with fifteen hundred bucks.
Yeah, I guess.
The court, it's gonna cost you more than that.
And I think.
The fifteen.
Looking at the agreement that I've asked to pay.
I don't know about that.
We look like.
Folks that we, they're, we pay them anyway.
It looks like.
I think they're listing right now, so.
Looks like this county uh, PA's reviewing the agreement as well.
Yeah.
Gets permission upfront to take it out of their last paycheck, so.
Oh.
So they can.
Well, that's true. So you agreed to a.
There's a lot of review yet to go through, but um, we're just looking for innovative ways, I know Commissioner Anderson's talked about. Upping the level of uh, LinkedIn that we have to a recruiter level, which is between under four or five thousand to give. We're just looking for tools, I think the salary survey is a tool, because I think it'll see where we are in the market, some of these difficult positions. As well, so, but that's not for a while yet.
I, I'm game, I'm.
I just bring you, if it passes legal review, I would just bring you a draft for your review, that's really what I'm asking, it's. You can look at it and then we can go from there, so.
I do have one more question, but I should ask, Brenda was here, where did we get? I mean, I know we put a lot of feelers out there for that job and finally got somebody. Capable. Was it from one of our expenses trying to get them or did they just find us?
I think this person found us on the Oregon Finance Officers Association, it was Brenda posted and Proffman posted.
So that was one of them free service things?
You paid a couple hundred dollars, I think, it's, but uh. Both Brenda and Proffman.
But it wasn't the head owner.
Well, it's hard to tell, both have been posted, both have access to that, so. So um, be hard to say, the one she saw who posted it, but.
Yep, so long-term care, um, the long-term care trust and email went out to employees. Uh, last week regarding some of the information, the state uh, has a website that has a lot of information on it. And so I'm directing employees to that if they have more questions. Um, premiums will start being deducted out of employees' paychecks on January first, uh, starting January first, twenty twenty-two. The um, funds will be available for people to use starting January first, twenty twenty-five. Um, there are exemptions, employees can file for an exemption, applications to file for those will be available October first. Through the state and employees would be required to get their own personal long-term care policy. And then that would make them exempt from paying premiums. Um, and we are working with the Auditor's Office on how we're going to decipher who will pay and who will not. Um, and then the state notifies us if they are exempt and then we do not take those premiums from the employee. Um, there are a lot of questions still regarding people who are retiring within the next five to ten years. Cause you have to become vested to be able to qualify for this. Um, and so if you're retiring in four years and you contribute to it, technically you're not vested, so you would be able to access the funds. And the state during their webinar last week, yes, said they're looking into it and they have, they're trying to address some of those questions and issues. To see um, how, how they can move forward with that.
Fair equitable way that.
Yes.
I'm required to pay into a fund I can't actually ever.
Yes, so as of right now. Yes, so as of right now, you either have to pay to it or you get exempt and then you don't have.
Yeah, really, yeah, yeah, really, thank you. Thank you for my chance.
The other thing they're stating too is if you apply for the exemption, you can submit your application, they'll be available October first. Uh, they are due by November first, so they're gonna only give you a month to be able to do that, if you apply later. They will still process your application, but chances are it's gonna be a backlog. And so then employees might have to still pay premiums until their application is approved, but then they don't get that money back either, so. So they're out those premiums until their application is approved with the state. And then the state provides them a letter and then they provide us the letter, so.
But yet, this long-term care is still capped at like thirty-eight thousand.
Thirty-six five. So, so a hundred dollars a day, a hundred dollars a day if you need it for a year. And then that's it, it's, it's a, it's a lifetime cap of thirty-six thousand five hundred. It's not like per every year or per five years, per ten years.
Which, based on recent experience, would buy you one half of one year, yeah.
That's, yeah.
So their push is that if you are needing like in-home care. And that is an expense that you can't afford, you're able to afford the other things, that this would cover some of those additional costs and stuff, and so. But yes.
And that's if you don't move out of state.
Correct, so that's the other kicker.
You're welcome.
You, if you live in Oregon, you still have to pay the premium unless you get an exemption. Um, working in Washington, um, and then if you retire and need the care and still live in Oregon, you would not qualify for that.
Or if the care that you're receiving is in Oregon.
So, and yes, and they said that obviously those questions have been raised, and so they're looking into that because. Um, the care that would be provided would be all Washington licensed companies.
And ours all go across the river right now, so.
Yeah, so, so those are all questions that they are trying to get answered for.
Although I have, I have less sympathy for that, considering the Oregon income taxes applied to Washington. Folks that have no, I get no services if I.
Yes.
And I'm not looking at.
At the Oregon residents?
We actually don't know that, so. But we do pick him up on traffic cams when he has to go to the bridge, so. Yeah, sales taxes kind of a wash.
So, yeah, so there's a lot of moving parts with this still and um, as, as we get more answers, I'll, I'll update you guys with.
We getting much pushback? Does the employees know about it or are we only getting a view or?
Well, on my email, I put please read in caps and so.
I saw that.
Yes, did you read it?
I did.
Good.
I already knew.
Typically, the HR emails, people don't read, yeah. So no, there have been some questions and they're all questions from people who, I'm retiring soon.
Yeah.
Do I have to file for an exemption? I have to go and pay for my own policy even though this isn't gonna apply to me, so. So there are some employees that aren't very excited about it, um, just because they wouldn't benefit from it.
So there's, there's no exemption that if you plan on retiring within two years before it would even kick in?
As of today, no.
Yeah.
You would still have to get your own policy to not have to be required to pay the premium.
Because like. Expect them to actually think through laws before they create.
I'm not sure that that's not, there was not.
Plus like social security, they need people to pay into it.
Yeah, to build up a fund.
Exactly, right.
The actuaries.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I suspect that was all calculated into the.
A few more things, salary survey, uh, we did send out the email to all regular employees. Um, requesting that they complete the JQ and so we'll start getting those back and sending those.
I will follow up with the electeds, uh, they're included in the survey, but you do not have to do the JQ since.
Okay, I. Oh, really? I just did it this morning, I wanted to see what it was like going through this.
I almost did, but I, I didn't want it to skew the results.
Uh, job classification committee, we did have some uh, people get volunteered to join the committee. And I did confirm with them that they um, that they would join and be a member and so Heather Joby. And Erin Quinn will be our new job classification committee members, so I will follow up with a resolution updating our list for signature.
Volunteered or got volunteered?
Yes.
Tomato tomato. No, I reached out. No, I reached out to them, told them that they were nominated and then they agreed to join it.
Say that.
Yes.
Yeah, I'm learning to say no yet.
Yeah, yeah.
Good, I'm glad.
Yeah.
And then finally negotiations, you said this is a publicly open public session, not August first is the date. This week start working with Eddie on at least lining up the calendars and I suspect what it'll be since every Tuesday and Thursday is budget related through the rest of the year. That we'll have to pick a date like Wednesday, you know, and dedicate that to negotiations. Would be Monday, Wednesday, Friday, Wednesday probably works, gives us time to. We do it on a Wednesday or Friday, then we can report to the commissioners following Tuesday if we need to, so. So as soon as Eddie and I come up with what works for them as well, then we'll try and get it on your calendars and we can determine who's participating in what, but pretty much your falls booked, I think. So. Well, if that's okay with you guys, I mean.
Wednesdays are better than Fridays.
Then it gives us time before and after the session to, to counter offers and to calculate things and bring it to the commissioners if we need or prepare for the following week, so.
Yeah.
I, I like Wednesdays will be good.
And I'll, I'll reach out to Eddie and see if we can have some understanding. So I think that concludes it for HR. Let's see if commissioners have any questions.
I thought you were gonna schedule us for defensive tactics.
Yes. I remember, just zigzag.
Okay.
It was handled professionally and appropriately.
Yes.
No one was harmed in the filmmaking of this movie.
Yes, yes, that's good.
Yes.
Okay, I heard you're the, you're the one.
As long as you don't cry, we're good.
Not sure who needed the protection, the.
Yeah. Yeah. Thank you, Casey.
Yes. Oh, that was a good day.
So Jeff and I would like to talk to you about a couple things. The first one we've brought here a few times on information only, but as we approach now the next supplemental date I can get further direction. So as you know, the phone, we're currently are on trunks and then we have a monthly phone bill. And together it's about seventy-nine thousand dollars a year and a lot of work for a lot of employees. We can move to.
So it's moving away from PRI trunks to SIP trunks.
And so that would eliminate sixty-six hundred dollars a month in expense and the long-distance phone bill. And all the work that's associated with that and the new cost would be thirteen hundred dollars a month. But to get from here to there, either we start with the new budget year or we, because it's thirteen thousand dollar upfront expense. And then however many months left in this year, because we would ship that entire expense to the IT budget. So we'd need to have moved nineteen thousand five hundred dollars into the IT budget to cover this expense and that savings would be from the departments. Funds and departments spread over forty different bars numbers, saving the expense, a couple hundred dollars in some cases. Three or four hundred dollars a month in some department cases, so. So the county would save the money, but we would need to actually physically put money in the IT budget to make the transition or wait till the first of the year and then budget the thirteen thousand. And the new expense for the whole year and then the departments would not have that expense. So I hate to keep burning money through the rest of the year just to.
Yeah, that, that doesn't make any sense to me. If I can save money, I, because it's, let's be honest, it's all the same money.
Right.
Whether it's thirteen thousand here or it's two hundred here and just that pulled out of all these different, well, we know where all the money came from. It all came out of a big pile to begin with, so. So it seems like a no-brainer.
Well, and I would, just for clarification, if we switch it early, that just means there's unused funds in that budget that come back to us at the end of the year.
Right, yeah, we're gonna get it.
Right.
As long as they're not spending it, so.
Yeah, like I said, savings would be small amounts in some departments, a little larger in other departments and I checked with all the grant departments, including public works and there's no downside to, to doing this from a grant perspective or a reporting perspective. It appears to be an efficiency and money-saving.
Yeah, because there's some, not just the money, there's some big efficiencies. Processing the bill.
The phone bill's that thick and has to get spread out over forty or fifty bars numbers and same to the phone. So it'd be basically moving us to that voiceover IP system, right?
To a certain extent, yes. I mean, we already use a voice, but, and also no more long-distance codes, so. I'm happy.
Win-win right there.
So if you're okay with it, we would bring it forward.
Cause I've been terrified I'm gonna forget money because it's not written down. It's been the same one. I just automatically but I'm worried the day's gonna come where I'm like.
It isn't right and I pick up my cell phone.
So we general consensus, we would bring it forward in supplemental budget and then be planning to make that transition. Probably August, September, whatever lead time we need to. So in essence, by the end of the year, it all paid off the thirteen thousand, so we're not, we're not setting them new thirteen thousand.
Right.
It is, it all was back into the bucket, right?
Is there any value since, it sounds like we, yeah, go ahead and do it. And I, maybe it's not, maybe it's because you said some departments, it's not much money, but others, you know, sometimes it's a reminder. Is there any value in a reminder to the departments that you're gonna not, you're gonna have a surplus now. Don't spend it on something else.
What I was trying.
I mean, a couple hundred bucks, you know, nobody's gonna track that much, but some of the larger ones. Where it's like this, we expect you to read, like, we're not paying the phone bill. You're not. We want the money we gave you for your phone bill. Give it back to us. You better send it back to us at the end of the year.
That works with your children.
Does that, wow. I'm still paying my.
Your three-year-olds.
Potential that they can rob it out of their phone fund to pay for something else. If that is available, then I want reminders to them to not. If we're paying this, now you're returning that money. Don't, don't go back on something else.
The other side of that coin is departments can count this as part of their three percent reduction proposals because for a department, it's four or five hundred dollars a month. That's five or six thousand bucks. But you're not getting current extra that they earned last year, so they may count it towards three percent or they may not.
Well, that kind of screws us over if they do because it's really not a three percent reduction because it might be a three percent reduction, but it's not saving us any money.
Well, the, the money does, the cost does go away. The sixty thousand is, is the same.
Yeah, that's true, all across the.
Across the spectrum.
So.
Forget I said that. We won't put that in memo. We'll put that in memo.
Well, I mean, if I'm curious what my teammates, if that's even, or, or Jen, I mean, is there any value to that? Is that just gonna piss people off?
If we don't let them.
Yeah, I, I think it's, you know, I think.
And when it's implemented and the saving starts to happen, you're, you're probably already gonna be in the budget workshops anyway.
Right. Yeah. Okay, those of you listening right now, though, informally, we want our money, we want our phone money back since we're paying your phone bill. Same thing I tell my kids. Hopefully it's more effective. Only kid now.
It will be for me.
The twenty-seven-year-old pays his own phone bill. Only recently.
Only recently. So wait a minute, I got four more years?
We met with the auditors yesterday to go through some recommendations that they had that we're working on. The, the last big one that we have to.
The auditors, our auditors or?
The state auditors.
Our auditors.
Our auditors sent it over to the other auditors. The state auditors and one of the, the big deliverables is a disaster recovery plan for what happens if a department due to some unforeseen emergency is at a business, has to move to another location or if an entire building. So the IT staff has been working on scenarios about how we get internet access and IT access to support to the departments that have to vacate their premises or we have to vacate an entire building. That all, if we had one, it would have all changed when we all moved into one building.
Right.
And so the next step is, we've created a, they've created a flowchart of scenarios. Now Gordy, we're gonna meet with the public works and facilities folks because it really has to dovetail with what their plans are. You know, can this department move to the fairgrounds? Can that department, you know, what's, what are the scenarios if we lose a department and or an entire building? You know, to continue to be able to operate. And then the next and the final piece, we'll meet with every department, find out what's, what is critical in terms of IT infrastructure and information so that they can meet the minimum. Initially get up, be tiered, phase it, approach what's absolutely essential and required by law that they have to be up and running in twenty-four hours and then what can be phased in over, you know, timeframe. So it's quite an exercise, but the state's requiring us to do it, so.
I, I think it's a good exercise. I, I definitely see value in it. I question why the state auditor, why this is a state auditor.
Well, they did an IT audit and, and they've issued a.
Again, I, I renew my question. But that's neither here nor there.
Yeah, but, I mean, the downside is if we don't work on it or respond, it becomes a finding in the audit and we're working to.
And I'm not willing to die on that hill as far as.
And some of it's good, you know, we came to.
Again, there's, these are good things. We should be doing that.
It's just scenario planning and you hope none of it ever happens and, and now that we're all in one building, two buildings, three buildings, I guess it, it makes it easier and more difficult. Cause there's a, something that impacts a department, it's probably impacted the whole floor and the whole building. So, but Gordy's expressed a willingness to, to meet with us and so we can, because I'm sure facilities has has to have scenario planning as well, so. And we've made improvements to the fairgrounds over the last year, so that makes it a, a real viable.
Yeah.
Backup, so which is good. Anything else you want to?
The was it the security review for new devices or software going on the network? IT is, is working up a, a procedure to evaluate any new devices or, or softwares right now. People can just put whatever they want on the network, so we're trying to evaluate its potential risk prior to it going on and then have a procedure in place to like if I say it's too risky, then they can go to rob and kind of escalate through the chain of command to get it put on the network. Or to get it denied.
So. And part of that dovetails with another part of the state auditor's IT assessment is risk assessment. We have to have things in place to, every time you plug something into the system, you're poking a hole in the balloon and is, if it can go out, things can come in. At least one county, the state's been completely shut down.
Well, I'm kind of surprised we even allow outside IT to plug anything.
Well, almost anything you buy now, and Gordy and I've had this discussion with the new building, almost anything you buy now plugs into the internet HVAC systems, automatic curtain systems, because everything gets updated.
Right, but they should all have to be going through IT to make sure they're not.
So what we do is create a separate network and keep things off the critical networks, so that if something's hacked, it's not hacked into the critical infrastructure.
Somebody wants to hold our shades ransom.
Our blinds will be going up and down.
Yeah, yeah, okay, we live with that.
So a lot, just a lot of time, like finding departments don't fully comprehend them and I understand.
See the risk because they don't deal with.
It just has to plug into the internet and
Right.
for software updates and things like that, but every one of those is a potential risk to the county, so. Which is Jeff's job and his team's job to try and mitigate. There's risk in everything we do. Trying to mitigate it is.
Yeah.
What we're trying now.
No, thank you for that. That's, that's good work there.
As far as the next generation of RIS, they're working out, they're working out a few bugs and then.
Throw me on the test schedule.
Yes. Curtis and Jill are actually working on a few issues that have popped up with it and once they've resolved that, then we can move to the next generation, so move away from the keys. Into cell phones, to sell work location-based county cell phone, so you don't have to use the key fob.
We should just keep one of them though, just for old times sake.
What about employees that don't have company?
They'll still be able to use a we're just trying to offer other options.
Yeah.
So. I think that's it for IT.
No retina scan or blood, blood DNA.
So, I guess for those that don't have company phones, is there any way to use their personal phones if they agree? Cause I mean.
That would be kind of a policy decision. I'm not exactly sure where we stand on that.
I mean, because all you're getting on that phone is a number. It's a text message in essence, right?
Right. I, I don't see a security issue with it.
Yeah, right. We've just been reluctant in general and again, we have to look into it. I think you make a good point, but people using their personal cell phones, that in itself probably wouldn't be a public record, but people use their personal cell phones for anything work-related, it becomes discoverable. So I'm sure the PA is listening and, and becomes because it's just got county records on it, texts, emails, chats. It's, your phone is subject to the same discovery that a county's phone is, so. A lot of people hate carrying two phones, but until you went through ten hours of deposition, trust me, it's like charity. But technology is advancing all the time and, and hopefully we can get to the point. In Oregon, they solved it by county-based stipends to employees to use their personal phones for county business and so it ethically correct, but it still makes your personal phones discoverable. That's not this state, so it's. But then again, like if your personal phone's discoverable and now everything's on the cloud, you just like, here, here's my password. Enjoy.
Well, like a lot of this stuff is on the cloud, so if you were to use your phone for G-Suite, that's all captured on the cloud.
Yep.
But I, I mean, I don't know where the.
Some of us have.
Where that line ends.
Plugged our phone in and linked it to the cloud in months because we don't get internet access where we live.
So those are all the things we're, we're looking into. That in itself may not be an issue, but we still, we have a lot of employees that do work on their personal cell phones and I think that's a risk to the county and to the employee.
Yeah, personal texts and, and phone calls would not be captured by the cloud, so.
Right. Okay, any questions for IT? Thank you.
Thank you.
Physical Services.
Hello again. Let's start with the American Rescue Plan. And I'm sure all of you know, but I just want to cover this. In order to receive any federal awards, we have to have a SAM registration, so federal system award registration anyway. It was expiring in August, so in order to continue to receive American Rescue Plan dollars and infrastructure dollars, we had to make sure that that was active. I've now been made an administrator to that account. And it has been renewed, so we have till twenty twenty-two. We've received two point one seven million dollars from American Rescue Plan dollars that's parked in Fund One Twenty-Five. The interim report, the first report for that is due within a month. We're supposed to report, it's my understanding that we're supposed to report obligations and expenditures. And any program data that could be related to loss revenue. That we could be using it for loss revenue. So I went and double-checked today. Treasury portal, what I thought was a glitch because it was only pulling up report information for the Emergency Regional Assistance Program, which we're not a part of. Is not glitched, it's just that Treasury is still developing the reports that need to be filed within the next thirty days. So.
And the unknown is whether it applies to this batch of money or the first batch of money is, you know, they're negotiating infrastructure deal in the Senate and one of the funding mechanisms is clawing back unused COVID funds, whether that be the first funds that went out or these funds are future funds, but I think it makes it very fluid if the Senate reuses some of these funds that are floating around the system. So everything's probably in flux to some degree.
No, and we haven't learned anything from care responding. It's only gonna be the limit that we're seeing, it sounds like. CARES funding. It's only going to be the 11,000, it sounds like, this one as well. Um, speaking of CARES, the state auditor is focusing on the CARES CRF funds. The 1.682 million dollars. So, um, since the beginning of July, I think it was back when I was in Spokane. The state auditor has been contacting me and we've been going back and forth. Uh, there was confusion between the state auditor and the county because Treasury used the same CFDA number for anything CARES related. So it was the Superior Courts, it was economic development, it was our 1.682 of the CRF funding. So on the CIFA annual report, all of those were filed, filed under the same section. So she was asking me, where's this 2.12 million dollars? Like that's not, I don't understand what you're talking about. So we got through that. Um, it took until last week actually to get through all of that and the back and forth for where she understood. And then, um, and so now she's got all the data, she's released some testing information and the auditors are now pulling time sheets and AP batches for her. So hopefully it's off my desk right now.
The good news is, you know, we anticipated this, we've been collectively the county, which is why the grant committee or the, uh, CARES committee was created initially and a lot of work done to, a cost account and, and to, you know, track these dollars. Cause you know, we all anticipated that they're, the state auditor was always saying there would be pretty intense audits. So hopefully we've.
Yeah, she was really focused on how we communicated those funds and what was eligible expenses across the county. Um, so she was very pleased that the answer was we had this working committee of people from various um, departments throughout the county who were, um, financially minded. That seemed to appease her. A few times now, uh, the treasurer's come in and talked about Fund 626, the wind farm sales tax exemption fund. Um, you guys have given the verbal approval to change the name of that fund since.
It's as other.
It's.
Things or.
Yes.
Categories. It's just a escrow account.
So on next week's, um, consent agenda, there will be a resolution I've drafted to change that to renewable energy, sales tax exemption fund. And Leslie, the.
But not Lee.
Yeah. The topic I'm, I see you guys twice a week for, um, the budget status. So the last time we talked, you guys had given the direction of a 3% reduction. We are having some systematic complications. You heard Brenda mutter something about Google Sheets as she walked out. Um, so we have, when Brenda's call it letter, she had set a deadline of August 9th. I just spoke with Brenda, we've extended it to the, um, August 23rd. I will be sending out the memo I just handed to you. Um, explaining what you guys had prepared it as far as guidance is the 3% reduction across prior year actual expenditures. Um, to make sure that these reductions are realistic, they're sustainable. And along with the extension of the deadline.
And the danger standards, all funds, all departments, not just the general fund, so.
Um, also explaining that I've opened up September for workshops instead of just October. Um, and had the idea, I mean, to bring forward to you guys, if you would like to start opening up August as well, maybe while they're in their building process, if they had any additional questions they wanted to speak to you about, if that would be an option for you guys.
This would just be give the individual departments the opportunity as they're building there.
As they're building to speak with you.
I do, I would like to caution you though, on August 5th, commissioners, Sotters.
I'm not leaving that.
The 12th is the only one that everybody's here.
No.
No, aren't you off that next?
He's off the first week, I'm off the second week.
That you were off. Oh, well, oh, thank you, Sherri. So I knew you were also gone the 26th.
That what?
You have a retreat.
Oh, I wish they would tell her retreat.
We do our best.
I need to call it a. Jailing.
We, we've had many discussions with commissioners. I think we do our best.
Yeah, so I guess you'll handle it. You understand what we're.
And, uh, the statement in here, department should be sure to factor in any planned step increases prior to making the 3% calculation. Um, that's, that can be taken two different ways. Like, are you saying I need to factor in the step increase and add it to last year? Or do I need to just step, you know? And we've had that conversation. So you might want to make that just a little more crystal clear for people. You're going to hear from everyone.
Because the direction we think we heard was at this point, your employees will get their step increases. Cost of living's different, get their step increases. So departments that won't be in their actual 2020. So they have to take their actual 2020, add in the cost of providing a step increase to all employees. And then it's 3% from that plus 2020 actuals. Otherwise they.
Not counting their phone bill.
Not counting their phone bill. Otherwise, otherwise they'll cut it and then add it via right back in step.
Yeah. I don't like funny math.
All right, we will try and clarify that language. Other questions? And we continue to, like this Thursday, we, um, Jen, Treasurer will be reporting in the morning, kind of a final report on some of those revenue items. This point unless the commissioners, uh, want to have discussions in the afternoon. You know, ongoing discussions, actually last Thursday was very productive in the afternoon. We really helped us um, put together the direction. So we'll, we can wait till Thursday and see if, if you want to continue in the afternoon at 11 o'clock. I've made an appointment with the, uh, contractor will be installing the AP in the commissioner's chambers. And so Commissioner Anderson and I will be meeting with them. Of course, the hall of commissioners can go over it if they want and they're going to be meeting with the project manager and the general contractor prior to 11:00 and then we can go over and, and, um, just meet the project manager from the, and of course, we can go over if, if they want to. I think that's all right. That'd be all right. So, um, we get Thursday, but we'll be breaking 11:00 to at least go over there and have a quick meeting.
Okay.
So.
What day is this?
Thursday. So we break a little early for lunch and then come back at 1:00 if, if, if you want to.
Are we expecting the afternoon to come back?
Um, I spoke with Greg this morning before coming in here and, um, it kind of depends on how the discussion.
All right.
We don't anticipate having eight hours worth of talking points, but should you?
Depending on where the conversation goes.
But we didn't have the formal agenda for the last half of last Thursday, but there was a lot of really productive discussion that we were able to to get. So it'll be your call, of course, on Thursday, whether we come back and if we do, how long?
I have a finance question. It's just not necessarily for you to. Mr. Gordy, uh, your building over there that when you move out, if we use it for something else, we have to buy out the Public Works Trust Fund, Dollar Mount, whatever.
Road Fund.
Road Fund.
Yeah, the road fund dollars have to stay with the road fund, so.
Right. So my thinking is for this budget year, and you guys might've already covered this, I might've be, you know, re redoing it. But anyway, with the landfill funds that go there, can we not use next year's landfill funds in your budget to start doing that buyout process now? Versus wait until later?
There are lots, lots of options to, to get there. If that's what you want to do, that's an option.
So if the building stays, I mean, in county ownership, but can the road fund lease it to and get paid? I mean, where they, they still, the asset is still held by the road fund. But any rent, like if it was rented to an entity or.
A third party.
A third party or to us, is that, that's possible, isn't it?
Okay.
I assume though, the road fund would have to have fair market rent return on its asset likely.
Well, I'm just, I'm just thinking if we use some of the.
Right.
Um, landfill funds that we're giving them anyway.
Right.
We can kind of check off a big chunk of it right off the bat. Any idea what that number is to buy out that building?
I don't. I don't have current marks.
And did the, did the road fund pay for any of this?
No. And so when we talked about this, we have with the building and how, how we would do something like that. We did talk about, you know, we can recharge rent.
To counteract that.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
There's lots of different.
Yeah, see, that's right. I think, yeah, because we had this discussion.
And maybe that part was there. I'm just thinking if there's a million that we could cut right off the top, um, that would make the term of any buyout a heck of a lot shorter.
Okay.
Sounds like there's multiple options.
Yeah.
We'll probably do all of them. I just, I hadn't heard this one, so I wanted to throw it out there before the budget talk started.
Okay. Any other questions for fiscal services?
Budget.
Nope. And then if there's no final questions for, for our departments, then, um, we'll ask to go into executive session and and ask that, um, Gordy and Jeff stay as part of that discussion.
And the purpose, it's obviously not litigation, must be employment, I hope.
Gee, sorry. Thank you, Lee.
Okay. Oh, it's, it's on my sheet. I'm sorry.
How long do you think you'll need?
Five minutes.
Five minutes. Okay. We will go into executive session in accordance with RCW 42.30.110.11 G to review the performance discipline or qualifications of a public employee. I'm assuming that's what G is.
Right.
For five minutes. So like. All right.
Well, there's, since we sort of announced we were, we're done, you know, one o'clock, we're ready back in.
But we can.
Tell them we're going to lunch.
Tell them we're going to lunch. So we will adjourn.
We did not make any action in executive.
No, we did not. So we will adjourn, uh, for lunch or we will recess for lunch, not adjourn. Uh, we will be back at 1:00.
Thank you.
I'll call the meeting to order. Let the record show all three commissioners are present. We'll start with the opening pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with a redeeming justice for all.
I would look for the, a motion to approve the business agenda.
So.
With the one add-on.
One add-on.
Yeah, with the one add-on.
Okay, I have a motion in a second to prove the business agenda with the one add-on under new business. Any discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, say aye. Aye, motion passes. I think we're going to defer on the meeting minutes for right now. And that will move us to citizen comment. Excuse me. This is an opportunity for citizens to address the board of commissioners. Uh, there will be a change that we have, we have due to the volume of people that have been, uh, testifying to allow for, uh, more citizens to have access to the board. We are going to limit comments to three minutes now and seven seconds. So, uh, if you can please do that. And so we will open it up, uh, for citizen comment. We have folks in, I'll start inside. If there's somebody here that wish you'd give us your name and what community you're from and address the board. Yes, ma'am. It's better for the, the mic to pick up.
End of video.
End of video.
My name is Debbie Wagner. I live here in Golden Dale. Um, gentlemen, I just have one question today. It'll be quick. I would like to see ordinances so we're safe when these companies come in. We have just heard of a meeting on August 3rd. Cypress Creek is coming to town. I'm upset and you can tell. We need your help. We need your power. Please give us ordinances. That's all we want. We want our citizens to be safe. I'm sorry, I'm getting upset. One other thing I'd like to say, and I'm done, is Douglas County just put all their ordinances through, talk with their citizens. Two weeks, gentlemen, that's all it took. Two weeks. Not two years, but two weeks. Please help us. That's all I'm asking. Please do think about what I said.
Thank you. Okay, we are in citizen comment. I will go, we'll, we'll take turns back and forth. If there is somebody on Zoom. Uh, Gabrielle Gilbert, go ahead.
Hi, thank you for your time. So, um, I have two points. They brought it up the last, um, citizens comment. I would like for the commissioners to address the need for daycare in Clickatack County and that, that lack of address has been building over the years. Um, and we have less and less resources for families, um, concerning daycare. If you want a vibrant, uh, economic conditions in the county, you really do have to address the need for affordable, safe daycare and, um, and the lack of it is a detriment to the, that economic growth. And it is time that those in positions of elected power and those that are in positions of, um, businesses and community power need to get in a roundtable and get some sorts of daycare solutions, um, put on the table to address. And then finally, um, I am going to say that the voices of opposition against what the sheriff is doing with this proclamation, we are not going away. And those that have a, um, idea that we're just going to move on, that is not happening. We will continue to address and critique this until it is finally addressed in a way that the community can feel safe. The people that work in the county can feel safe and elected officials can feel safe. And it is, um, our job to critique, um, and keep that pressure on until that is addressed in a way that everyone feels that, um, they are safe in their, their community. And the lack of trust that some community members have with the sheriff's department is real. And it is up to the sheriff's department to start addressing the lack of trust that community members have concerning, um, the sheriff's department and how it is led under Sheriff Songer. So thank you for your time. Um, I hope it gets back to seven minutes. I think it's important that voices in the community are, are never limited. So thank you for your time and I appreciate it.
Ms. Gilbert, did you wish to respond?
Ms. Gilbert, this is Commissioner Christopher. I just wanted to let you know that there is a Clickatack County Child Care Committee that has been working on this for a good year and a half or so. Um, through, um, Leslie over at WOGAP, they just finished a study. I am also on that committee. So, uh, I would encourage you to reach out to WOGAP and get their, um, study that they just finished about two weeks ago. They're also going to be applying for another grant for the next, uh, year's grant cycle to continue that one. So it is, um, it is being worked on. We know it's an issue and we're going to do what we can.
I appreciate that. Um, I think it's really important because it's an issue that's kind of been sidestepped for a long time. Um, and I think it is great that there are finally communities. I just hope that things get moved out of committee and actually become actionable things that people in the community can see. I think that's really important as well, but I appreciate that the beginnings have started. I just don't want to get stuck in committees or where good ideas go to die is what I want to say as well.
With that, it's, it's just right now, everybody's looking for funding. So.
Well, and that.
Location is there, just needs funding, so.
And may I quickly add, we are a desert when it comes to grant funding. I feel that that is something elected officials need to step up their game to state officials. Um, that you guys all as elected officials, local and state are addressing the funding desert that is grant fund, you know, that, that we are a desert when it comes to grant funding and I feel that that's something you guys need to do.
I'm sorry, your time, your time's a lap.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we are in citizen comment. I go back to the room. Is there anybody in the room? Yes, ma'am. We have your name and your community for the record. That would be helpful.
My name is Sherry Bosse. I live in Houston. You've spoke to me many times on citizen comments over the Zoom meetings. And I'm here today in person to put my person in front of you, my citizenship in front of you gentlemen who have a lot of power in our county when it comes to especially development oversight and what you allow to happen in our county and what you gentlemen oversee. And I'm here to talk about the under campus conditional use permit. As you know, your county, because our, our county, Clickatack County, is against the citizens right now. We are in an appeal for the. We are in an appeal for the CIPA, and it is Clickatack County and under campus against me, your citizen who pays taxpayer dollars. My taxpayer dollars right now is paid for you, Clickatack County, to continue to push forward, to push this conditional use permit down our throats in Houston. As you can tell, I'm very angry, you will destroy lives, destroy lives with this, and you are using our resources. You, how many thousands of dollars are you into under campus? Because we're going into this, this hearing examiner, and I don't understand how you gentlemen thought you could push this forward to a hearings examiner without going through our Board of Adjustment, but I guess you'll make us figure that out, fighting you, again, Clickatack County, in court, to figure that out, instead of doing the right thing. You know, they will raise our fire risk out there, we are at extreme right now. Under campus has told you they will raise our fire risk. They have not provided an evacuation plan, they have not gotten more water rights. Mr. Sauter, you said if they could not get underwater rights, they could not get a conditional use permit. So why is this hearing happening? It should be a done deal right there, but still, you push it on us. And for not having code compliance right now, no laws, no laws for us citizens for code compliance is very disturbing. You gentlemen should be working on that for our protection, nobody in this county has protection. And I am asking you to, one, stop this wrecking ball of under campus, you have the power to pull it back now. Stop pushing this on the citizens and stop wasting our money trying to force this on us when we have proven with experts, this will hurt us. It will hurt many people, they cannot evacuate. I am asking you to stop issuing cups until you have code compliance. I would like you, Clickatack County, to stop issuing any building permits until you get code compliance laws back on our books. It is not right to operate in this way as a county. And you're gonna force solar panels and destroy acres and acres of grounds using a cup, Mr. Anderson. What you asked us to trust, and I don't trust it, please stop abusing us citizens.
Thank you, Ms. Bosque. Response. Okay, we are still in citizen comment, is there somebody, we'll go to the, we'll go to the Zoom folks, is there anybody online that wishes?
Star six if you're on your phone.
Star six if you're on the phone, I see zero six two, or six two seven four has unmuted, did you wish to speak?
Yes sir, I was calling, my name's Benjamin L, I was just calling in regards to transportation needs. I was wondering if you folks could end up getting a bus stop in Clickatack. There is a shortage of transportation down there, and that's all I wanted for mountainous transportation. You guys are doing an excellent job and I greatly appreciate what you guys do, and that is all. And so, yes. And I hope you guys have a great day, I won't take any more of your time, please consider it, and I would greatly appreciate it, and so would the community, thank you.
Thanks sir. We don't have bus even in Lisle, do we?
No, that's part of that. Okay, we are still in citizen comment, I will go to the room again, is there anybody in the room that wishes to give citizen comment? Okay, come forward sir.
Greg Wagner, Golden Dale, with the group CESE. When wind power came here, you guys recognized the need for ordinances and control over wind power. Now solar's here, we had a moratorium, we gave you all the information you needed to digest and understand the dangers and hazards of solar. You rescinded our moratorium without any findings of facts, you want the project to move forward. You had ordinances for wind, we need ordinance for solar. We're not asking for too much, you have ordinances for all kinds of things in this county. Why can't we have ordinances for solar? Batteries are a danger, we've proven it to you. June twenty-ninth, Morris, Illinois. A recent fire from lithium ion batteries, explosions evacuate the citizens. Twenty-eight tons of cement to put the fire out, you're on the fire, we can't fight it with water, we can't fight it with, with foam. Do we have twenty-eight tons of cement sitting around somewhere, ready to put on a fire? The two acres of, of lithium ion batteries out by the substation? We don't have it, Tony Browning says he's not prepared to fight the fires. Why are we allowing this to move forward? We got this conditional use, then Mr. Anderson says trust the process, keep it local. We don't even know what the CUP is, we can look at the E O Z and read it, we don't see anything in front of CUP. How can you trust something you can't see? We've been down this road, you said you were fair and honest, you can't be fair if you take and say, I'm in favor of wind and solar and rescind our moratorium and just move on. Since that time, you haven't had one discussion, at least to the public, not a workshop yet, to discuss your so-called guidelines, which your prosecuting attorney told you that can't be enforced. He told you, we need ordinances, we need laws, that's why you have them for wind, why don't we have them for solar? Why are you ignoring this? My life and many other people's lives are gonna be destroyed, yours has a potential to be destroyed, Mr. Christopher. You live in a protected area and I don't know, you must be somewhere out where you don't have to worry about it, because you're glad to let it come here. It's gonna destroy a lot of people's lives. Those are the people you're paid to represent, not to ignore. Why can't you have open public forums and talk to the citizens? You said you, during the moratorium, that you resided over many contentious meetings. Nobody acted bad during the solar moratorium. You think negative of the people rather than giving them a chance. We want to have open public, public town hall meetings with you guys. You should be willing to talk to the people you represent. Not just let us make our comment and say, thank you, Mr. Wagner. You know, and the personal attack, when I ask you, Mr. Sauter, you said on this date, I was on the committee for the E O Z, you're right, Mr. Wagner, we don't have anything about solar, we never thought to get here. And then in May you say, the E O Z has everything we need. And I ask you, which statement is true? That's not a personal attack, that's asking you to clarify two statements.
You're out of time, sir.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Wagner. We are still in citizen comment, I will go to the, or I guess I had looked if, if anybody had anything they wanted to respond. I will go online if there's a citizen that wishes to address the board. Raise your hand, get my attention, get our attention, unmute yourself, star six. I'm not seeing anybody. We have a lot of screens open, so.
There's a lot of people and a lot of new phone numbers, so I will say, again, for all you people that called in on your phone, star six to unmute if you wanna talk to us.
Not seeing that, I will open it up in the room if there's anybody else who wishes to make citizen comment. No? Okay. That is available. When somebody wishes to.
Are you still admitting to three minutes?
Yes.
Was that voted on?
No, it was noticed. Three minutes has always been, I mean, citizen comment, the length of time for citizen comment has always been at the discretion of the board. It is, we did have discussions on Thursday when we made that decision, we had checked around the state to see is there in the vast majority of, not just counties, but hospitals, school districts, it's three minutes. Our seven minutes was, to my knowledge, was the only one in the state of Washington. The idea is, I don't wanna limit citizens' opportunity, but we have, we have seen now, we're not today, that we have, but as, as we were aware last week, where we had to have a second citizen comment because we ran out of time for people to have access to the board.
Did anybody comment on that second?
Yes, we had several people came back and commented on the, on the second one.
So.
So I believe, didn't, didn't you comment on the second one?
No.
Oh, okay.
As I said, I don't, don't have my notes with me, I was trying to remember who did.
But we did, we did have the second round.
I would say that I've had people in the general public, as I'm just walking around town, have called in to comment, but they don't feel like they have adequate time. Because it's, I'm not offending here, but the same people over and over again, and their concerns don't, in their words, they don't feel their concerns are as big of concerns as your concerns, so they don't mention their concerns and then they don't have access because they feel like their concerns are petty, you know, a dark barking dog or something like that. They don't wanna make a comment because they're gonna be shut down because you guys have big concerns and theirs are little. I know it's weird, and that's what I've tried to tell them, so that's why we're kind of doing the three minutes to see if any of them will step forward and actually.
But I hope they do, because every concern is relevant.
I think that's exactly what I, so we're hoping in this new format, some of those people will step forward and make comments.
And I'm hoping that by citizens showing up and making comments to you gentlemen inspires other citizens to use their voices as well. That we can have hopeful conversations, and I know I'm upset, but I think I hold myself together knowing what's the train wreck that's coming down our Houston right.
It's just another reason why you should have monthly town hall meetings to give all those other people the opportunity. They can call in, you can put ahead of us, that's, that's fine. But let's have town hall meetings where, where you guys make yourself accessible to the public, to all the public, not just three little minutes. Some issues are much bigger than three minutes, a barking dog, the guy talks for more than three minutes.
Okay, we're still in citizen comment. So I will give an opportunity for folks on the Zoom or phone, if you have a, any topic that you wish to raise. If it's, if it's important to you, it's important to us, so unmute yourself. Russ is unmuted, go ahead, sir.
Hey, good afternoon, can you guys hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Uh, this is Russ Hansen, Golden Dale. I'd just like to make a comment, my wife and I took a trip out to Lund Hill Solar Project last week. Yeah, no one's been out there, I'd really encourage you, go out there, if the commissioners haven't been out there recently, you really need to go out and see it. It was absolutely jaw dropping, I mean, it sicked our stomach to see not necessarily what's going on there, not saying that's a bad sighting for it, but to think that that's gonna be coming to the Knight Road Hill area around all these houses. Just their logistics area alone, where they have the materials, parking, and local buildings, probably took up sixty acres. The amount of heavy truck traffic, the dust was unbelievable. So I just really encourage you guys, go out and take a look at it, and just imagine it coming to this area out here at Knight Road. It's disturbing. Anyway, thanks for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Hansen.
Dave B.
Dave B, go ahead.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, Dave Vart of Golden Dale. I, you might have noticed, we have a little bit of a water quantity issue in the area, meaning there isn't enough. The South Fork of Lockhouse Creek is dry for the second year in a row at Fish Hatrian Hill Road, which is the only time I know of that I've heard of in history, and it was two years in a row. The spring is still running, although no one is irrigating from the creek. The water only goes about a quarter mile before it's consumed by reed canary grass and cattails and other things, I guess. Has the county commissioners considered taking guidance on or given any guidance to planning and building departments about the continuation of drilling new wells almost unstopped? I guess I would say in my conversation with other agencies at the state level yesterday, I reckon, I think I have a very, a very small bit of knowledge about what constitutes the state's responsibility to restrict well drilling. But we're, in my opinion, I mean, I've only lived here for thirty-five or thirty-six years. We're headed for a problem really quick, if we have one more year like the one we're having now. I guess if, I suppose if a guy doesn't like citizen comment, when people do have water, they really won't like it when they don't have water. And I think that's gonna start happening. So with that, I just would appreciate any input that you can give to the planning and building departments about the continuation of wells of all kinds that are being drilled and the fact they're gonna have on groundwater for everyone who's already here. Thank you for your time.
Response. I'll give a response to you if we wanna. Yeah, if we have time, okay. We're still in citizen comment, I'll go back to the room if there's any people that haven't spoken yet. No. Okay, I will go back to the Zoom if there is someone that wishes to make public comments. This is your opportunity. Unmute yourself, raise your hand. Get our attention. Not seeing anybody right now, if you wanted to comment.
Dave, this is Commissioner Anderson, with regards to the wells and the availability and the aquifers. Yes, we are seeing wells this spring, so even in the spring after the winter rains, wells were, the water levels were down, they did not return from last year like they usually do in the winter. That's easily seen in the amount of precipitation we have. Everybody is in this together. Wells that are in the shallow alluvium aquifer need to be the most cognizant of how much water they are using. It behooves each and every one of you who's on well water to, to conserve all that you can, don't think about keeping your grass green this year, I know it's a fire bumper, but when it comes down to the potability of water, you have to make that decision for you and your family, as does your neighbors. The High Prairie area is one area that is highly efficient, they're very prone to wildfires, but nobody has green grass up there. You're seeing that more throughout the county, even the west side of the county, it's a very dry year. In terms of my history, the only dry year I know that's, that's rivaled this one in recent memory was two thousand and five, dry and hot years. And yes, that, you're, you're also correct, that it's been two years in a row, last year was not a, a great year either. So everybody has to work together, the other, last thing I can say is, is that the actual amount of water that's withdrawn from the wells, most of the water that you ever pump, so long as it's not going on irrigation, grass goes right back into that same aquifer. The consumptive use from a well in a house is very, very minimal. It's when you start irrigating your lawn that that consumptive use goes up and that changes the, changes what can happen in those streams for the most part.
And then, do we have any others?
We're gonna answer on that one then.
Okay, we are still in citizen comment, we'll give an opportunity if there's anybody else, I do see AK is unmuted. I don't know if that was an attempt to speak to the board or not.
There's, don't think they have anything.
Okay. Okay, I got another one if you want. Go ahead.
Okay, in response to Sherry, the county is not fighting you. You have rights as a citizen, just as every other citizen has rights, just as a business has rights. And the rights to go through and use the due process of law is important for both you as well as the other side. You have a right to oppose something, and somebody else always has a right to propose a project. The county's job is not to take sides, the county's job is to process the application. Sometimes somebody has to take sides, and if it was a regular CIPA appeal, then it would be the three of us who would make that decision. That's our quasi judicial powers.
But you sent it outside the county, you did not keep our cup processed local.
Okay.
So when you say it's local.
You have to understand, Clickatack County is actually a very rare county. Most counties in the state, the Board of County Commissioners don't get involved at all, everything is done through a hearings examiner. That exact same thing that you brought up, Debbie, about Douglas County, if, if you read it, it goes through a hearings examiner. So when you look at these things, hearings examiners are normal, they are actually the general procedure in the state if you look at other counties. Clickatack County, we believe that we need to be the ones in the hot seat, we don't hire hearings examiners for the most part.
Quick question then, why is?
Let, let him make his comment, this is, he's responding, you've already had your three minutes, ma'am.
He's just talking rhetoric, it's rhetoric.
Sherry, Ms. Bosque, please, please, please let us follow the rules. The rules are clear, three minutes of citizen. Please let us follow the rules. The rules are clear. Three minutes of citizen comment. If a commissioner wishes to, to respond, they can or not.
Well, it's insulting.
Ma'am, it's insulting to me that you are not abiding by the chairs.
I am being lied to.
Ma'am. You wonder, you wonder what, why do your interactions always end up this way?
Because you lie to us and it's upsetting.
No.
Your prosecuting attorney is a gift.
Ma'am, you're out of, you are out of order. If you can't follow the rules. Please restrain yourself. If you wish to continue. Sure.
I lost my, my momentum there, but let me, let me see what else I got here. Um. With regards to a CIPA process. You have not completed and been through a CIPA process. Um, there is a process in place. I would say this for the same for the under canvas as well as. For what we are going through with regards to the solar projects, okay? And especially on Knight Road. There's a CIPA process for a reason. Um, you can see from all of what is happening with the under canvas process where both sides have lawyered up. There are lawyers on both sides that are fighting over this and it is going from through a hearings examiner in this instance. And a hearings examiner is a lawyer who understands the law, land use law, much better than the three commissioners do. That's one of the reasons that these other counties have went through the process of using hearings examiners who have been through law school. And there's a reason for that. The reason that in January that I pushed forward on a CIPA process. For the Knight Road area was so that it would have public comment, it would have public involvement. Everybody would get to have their say and everybody could comment and be involved. And that's why I push for it because I do care about the community. I care about your rights as a citizen to comment. I care about your rights as a citizen to appeal and I care about the rights of all citizens in this county to be represented. And that's what's important to me. And I understand that it's frustrating. I understand it's very frustrating. We've all been through it. If you've lived here a long time, you can see the changes that have occurred in this county. Everyone at your houses that every one of us lives in is, was at one point, some point. Either rangeland or something else that was being used by somebody else and they probably weren't happy when you built your house. Changes do happen in this area, but the important thing is, is that we have a public process. We show respect. Throughout the process and we work together. Not everybody's going to be happy with every decision. Some of them, nobody's going to be happy. Well, if you ask Dave, it's probably most of them, no, not everybody happy. And that's usually what happens when we actually come to the end of the story, when compromise is in fact. Found in politics, usually no one's happy. Now, I ought to say that from now on, as a commissioner, if somebody shows disrespect. And speaks disrespectfully and has to get gavel down, I will not respond because I do not believe in negative reinforcement. As long as you can show respect, as long as you, and I have no problem talking with anybody. I talk with everybody all the time. I have, I will say, Mr. Wagner, though, that when you, when you say you want to hold a public hearing or you want to do a town hall and you're asking us our opinions. How we feel about something. As soon as you do that, and then if a commissioner says. Well, yeah, we've always, we have a long range plan. We've always been in support of renewable energy. It's built into, uh, our planning documents. Over twenty years. Once you say that, or once he says that, and then you're going to come back over the top and say, you can't be fair. That would be in essence be saying, anything we have in terms of us responding to anything, any answer we give. We will then create the potential visual in your mind of a conflict of interest because we've given you an opinion. Whether it's we're in favor of e- energy development or we're in favor of economic development. You, that will be then used against us. You have to realize that we are people too. We are doing the best we can. This isn't a great job, but we're trying our, our darndest to listen, to respond. To answer all your public records requests and to be involved, but just realize we're going to have a pub, a, a. Community hearing up in Glenwood on the track D information. I would have no problem having more town halls. As you can see, I don't mind talking. But what it comes down to is you have to show respect. You have to be respectful or you're not going to get any sort of ra- reciprocity from who you're speaking to. And I hope everybody in here understands that as well as those that are on the phone. You'll always see that when people are very respectful, when they speak to us, we're far more apt to respond. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Anderson. We are out of citizen comment, although I would give an opportunity.
No, we're already four minutes over.
Okay, thank you, thank you. We're actually. I don't like to use the gavel. I, I can tell you, I've, I've used this gavel four times in fifteen years. Twice of which, whatever, in the last couple of months.
And I, I'm standing up for the citizens. I'm standing up for the citizens.
Thank you.
And I hope other citizens stand up for themselves too.
Okay, we are out of citizen comment. Um, ma'am, if you, if we have a little break, if I can talk to you personally if you want, if that's. If you had something you want to raise.
No, I just have.
Thank you. All right.
Can we squeeze her in a little bit later, a little citizen comment?
Yeah, that's fine. Um, we are now, um. Consent.
The chairman to make a motion, we approve the consent agenda with all nine items.
I will second the motion. Okay, I have a motion to second on the consent agenda. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Payments. Bills.
The chairman to make a motion that we approve the accounts payable warrants in the amount of two hundred and twenty-seven thousand, six hundred and seventy-seven dollars and sixty-six cents. And the payroll benefit warrants in the amount of one million, sixty-two thousand, nine hundred and eleven dollars and twenty cents for the date ending July twenty-six, twenty twenty-one.
You take it back and I want to pay those bills. I have a motion to second to pay the bills. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Which brings us to the add-on under new business. This is approval of memorandum of understanding between Clickatack County and Clickatack Valley Health. Uh, under the proposed MOU, the county will provide up to thirty-five thousand dollars. I inserted the up to. In community development funds to reimburse KVH's costs associated with coordinating and sponsoring a regional economic development summit. For the greater Goldendale area. This community development funding request was discussed. With the Clickatack County Public Economic Development Authority board members, individual board members were supportive. In providing KVH the funding for the regional economic development summit. Do you have anything, Mr.? Okay, to add. Okay, discussion.
I would just like to thank you both for doing it. And the whole media board for that matter.
We haven't done it yet.
Give it a try.
You want to make the motion? Go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, I would, uh, approve the memorandum of understanding between Clickatack County and Clickatack Valley Health. Under the proposed MOU, the county will provide up to thirty-five thousand in community development. Funds to reimburse KVH's costs associated with coordinating and sponsoring a regional economic development summit for the greater Goldendale area. This community economic development funding request was discussed with the KV, uh, the board of the KC PDA. Board members, the individual board members were supportive of providing this KVH with the funding for the regional economic development summit.
Okay, I have a motion to second to approve the MOU between the county and KVH. Any further discussion? No, the time only, my, I'm, I'm very supportive of this as far as I, I hope it's successful. I hope. Um, it would be really good to have some focus here. Yeah, so, but I think we got to put our money where our mouth is sometimes. So I'm willing to support the investment. Uh, any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. MOU is approved. And I'm going to use my chair's prerogative now. I will have, uh, a little mini public comment period, ma'am. Since we were out of our scheduled time. If you can give us your name. Yes, ma'am.
I just have one question.
Yeah, can, can I have your name for the record? You come up so folks can see you too. You get to be on camera along with the rest of us. Your name and what.
My name is Debbie Culver and I'm from Goldendale. And I have one question and it was handed to me as I was leaving home, so I, that's why I forgot it. When are you going to reopen the jail ministry? Question mark.
The, oh, okay. So now, I was actually unaware that it, it wasn't, it, I assume it has not restarted since COVID.
No.
Okay. That is likely, I'm going out on a limb here. It's likely it's probably the sheriff would be the one that actually.
So the person who talked to me said they talked to Carmen and Carmen's under you. If I have all the names right.
No, Carmen's under.
Under Sheriff Songer.
Okay, well.
So it would be the sheriff, it would be the sheriff.
They want to start it, it's fine with me.
Yeah. I assume they had.
Brave enough to ask you a question.
Well, hopefully it's the first and many to come.
All right, thank you. Okay, that brings us to prosecuting attorneys time. Uh, Mr. Kinnell, if. Um, you're, I think I saw you on the line earlier.
I don't have anything today, gentlemen.
All right, see, I saw you in the building, so I knew you were here. Any questions for the prosecutor?
Nope, did we, did we end up getting the Glenwood thing on our schedule? Is it on our?
It should be, yeah, the seventeen, August, September. At six.
Six thirty.
Six thirty. Okay, all right, thank you, Mr. Prosecutor. Uh, board pending updates from the previous week. I'd say we, we've been meeting so much, we don't.
Friday, Saturday. Let me look at my notes just to make sure. No, I got nothing since Thursday, so.
Anything that you wanted to add? Then it was the weekend.
We had a lot of meetings. I was just trying to think what, what.
In my calendar.
Here's a look at the calendar and then I have a notepad that's just board pending that I.
No, I'm good today.
Okay, um, I did have, um, as I mentioned this morning, the, I do have the Friday, I think it's eight. Early eight o'clock is the, the interagencies are, we're going to be discussing as far as the closure of public lands. Uh, following suit because, uh, DNR has already done that as we had said. I expect if they haven't yet, they soon will. Forest Service, because of the extreme fire danger, will be closing recreational lands. And so this will be a kind of a coordination discussion about. Uh, because some counties in the region or public, you know, cities and stuff have public lands that they use. And so it's going to be a question of the river, how's that all going to work? And then if they don't close and we're open or vice versa, what's that going to do? So it's just kind of a coordination meeting. So I've got that on Friday. I did have, um. AdSWA meeting, the board, which meets, I think, every two months. That's the area agency. I don't know if Sharon was on, uh, they did, um. So that's where the funding for senior services comes through that agency. That continues, I think I had, uh, I had, um. Commented a couple of meetings ago how they have had a pretty significant, um, fund balance increase in the, in the. Agency over the last, and you know, I had advocated, and not by myself, everybody else agreed too, that. The, they should be, you know, those are, um. You know, providing services and that rather than build coffers in the organization, the money should go out the door to the. Like Clickatack County Senior Services to provide more services and so, and they are, um, so we are doing that. Uh, we should have the, the amendments should, if they haven't already, come out so it will add some extra dollars that we're getting. For, uh, congregant meals, senior transportation, so they will be upping those, uh, to try to balance out.
Is it a, is it a one time up to clear their funds or is?
It's, uh, it's to try to get it to a sustainable. Where it's not, but even with that, with that built into it, there's still, the fund balance is still growing even with the additional. Uh, projected outlays and so that's something, um, I think we're going to, I'm going to continue to watch and advocate for. Because again, I think it's reasonable. You need to have a adequate, um, fund balance for cash flow. You know, and all that, but whatever that limit is, anything over and above that, you should try to balance your. You know, so that you're stable, that you're not growing fund balance or decreasing fund balance. That's bad too, but you want to try to keep it somewhere in there and every other dollar should be going out for program services. So that it's provided, and it's, it's a good board. There's, um, so it's us, Skamania, Clark. Cowlets and Wakaiakam are the five in the, in that group is the governance board. And so, uh, everybody's universally agrees with that approach, so.
You don't need the in-person there or no?
No, it's still, it's still, I could have went in person was the first meeting. We still had to be masked up. And so I would rather be unmasked. You don't have to go because it's all down, it's, it's Vancouver.
Yeah.
Um, I wouldn't mind actually meeting somebody in person once.
Nice to save the two hours.
Yeah, the two hours to get there, so that was, that was what I had on Friday.
So for Friday, uh, is this statewide, like, or is this a?
It's the, it's the regional. Um, it is, uh, Lynn from, now former retired from the Forest Service is. Facilitating and it's the same, same, uh, footprint as the rec ones were that were earlier that I had participated in. Because it's a very similar, when it was COVID shutdown, what impacts that was going to have on recreational lands and now it's extreme fire. So it's kind of the same thing. So it's the five counties, actually six, it includes Baltimore and they actually do participate. Yeah, they've had the, uh, not the sheriff, but some like undersheriff or a high ranking. Uh, law enforcement, because they've had, um, because they do the. Law enforcement, they, they have interactions that like Baltimore Falls at the parking lot, so they were talking about the difficulties of. Uh, managing that circumstance and then all the, the, because the old, the scenic highway was closed. And they may be, I don't know, that's one of those questions I've got. Does that mean, are they going to close the scenic highway or they? I don't know why they would, but, um, and then what that's, when that's going to be. So that's on Friday. Anyway, I'll, I'll update next week.
Are you, there's a, uh, McKed sets meeting, vision and goals.
Yes, tomorrow.
Are you doing that one?
Apparently.
I threw it on my calendar, I was.
I was reminded yesterday and I was, that's what I wanted. I want to talk to Richard Foster.
I would be listening, you know.
To as far as our, I think it's our turn to present our sense and our priorities and I need to. Know what those are exactly tomorrow.
Okay.
A lot of twenty minutes, which I'm happy to give nineteen up to you if you will.
Go for it. Um, Wausau County Leaders Conference.
Yes.
Um, on the calendar, it's Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday. When do they normally start on Tuesday? Do you know? Idea ballpark. I won't hold you to it.
Tuesday, it's, it usually it starts in the evening, like my first, like I. They used to do them or in the, or, you know, late afternoon, I'll say.
So you're going up Tuesday morning.
Right. And it's mostly set up because probably the majority of county's business meetings are on Mondays. And so ours used to be way back and the idea was you could still do business. You could start on Tuesday. Our business meetings are on Tuesday, so it doesn't really work.
And then it says go Tuesday, so I imagine they're doing, you know, a breakfast meeting and then you're released or?
No, it's Thursday goes till late. It used to go Thursday night is the final thing, which it's hard to keep people there for. The last, like official function. No, generally typically you stay, especially if it's in Spokane, Thursday night, come back Friday morning. There's nothing, they have, sometimes they even schedule some stuff Friday morning before people leave, but typically the, the, uh, conference is over Thursday night. You have to plan on Tuesday night, Wednesday. You have to plan on Tuesday night, Wednesday night, Thursday night, really.
And that's all that hotel lodging is arranged through them?
No. We're through to our travel agent. No, they will have a room block as far as like at the, so it's they'll have the number of rooms for the folks at the.
Conference block out.
And at the rate, so we get a better deal because there and then if you don't fit. Sometimes those fill up and they're gone, so I would, Lee's always really good about.
Well, I'm kind of looking at it and it says we have radio that Thursday at eight oh four.
So will we schedule it or we will do it? We call in. So getting back to it, I know the the. Umatilla National Forest, the Forest Service closed it down totally. Like it's practically gates locked. There's no camp and there's no recreating. No logging, not only wasn't much going on out there anyways. But and then what I have heard though is that there's a good chance we're going to be going IFPL four for all eastern Washington. Which which what I'm hearing is the same thing. The loggers are surprised. Every year, the the loggers ask for two week notice, like give us, you know. Because, you know, we can go to fires, we can do other things. And that hasn't been given yet, but they don't know if they will get it. And that's was the earlier with our road because if we go to four, our our projects get shut down too. And so I hope you can get in touch with Hillary because there's no reason why we can't. You've got enough. Heavy equipment there that excavators, you could just dump it on.
Right.
So that's just, you know, what I heard from the logging side.
Have you talked to Jay out there?
Jay with Mel Adams? So he took, you know, he when you met him, he's got that big group of guys that he has that's doing prescribed fires, cleanups. They all got shifted to fires. They're all they all got.
Well, I had to reach out to KVH for this Reds thing. To reach out to him out there to see if he had any project ideas to bring to that table.
Because it's for your the big everything. I don't know what GA would have really out there.
Thought I'd thoroughly invite.
No, I haven't talked to him lately, but I should.
Yeah, you never know when you get that many. Beds with wallets, what they might be interested.
Right. The other update I heard is that the spotted frogs, you know, in the Glenwood Valley. Numbers are way down. Well, and since, you know, and it's went down since. How or not how roaring, but the big buddy got shot. Few years ago, the Reds just. Toad numbers went significantly down and there's, I think, only one really heavy area and that's the lowest part of the valley. You know, right before it goes into the big. Fire lake. There's something to keep on your guys' radar. And then did you guys get a phone call from Sage Park this morning?
Yes.
Okay. And I did see, I haven't opened it yet, but I think that I think it. Yeah, I'm sure it's in there somewhere. Group of stuff. It was very clear that it was, you know, it's just. Anything else?
Yes, ma'am.
I just let the lady know that I did message Carmen and she was shooting for August first, but the way. Everything's going, she's hoping mid-August to open up the jail ministry.
I know they have different COVID protocols in the jail than everybody else does. So they're kind of airplanes, trains, all that kind of stuff. They might just be following COVID protocols.
You need Gordy to take a tour?
I don't.
No. I know how to walk upstairs.
Then we can look where we want. What I did last week. I just put my hat on and my orange vest and.
Acted like you.
Acted like I belong.
Little drywall, it's good.
Okay. If there's nothing further. I would entertain a motion to adjourn. This is bizarre at this hour.
I know, it's just weird. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to be adjourned, the regular meeting. Till eight AM for the schedule workshop on Thursday.
Yeah, you can if you want or I will.
Go ahead.
I also will note for the record, the Board of Commissioners will be attending a the Clickatack County Public Economic Development Authority meeting tonight. So we're we're not leaving. We're here. We just have a break. Tuesday, July twenty seventh, beginning at five fifteen, the meeting will be held in this room, so and that is open to the public. So that's Casey PETA, the Clickatack County Public Economic Development Authority, which is the Board of Commissioners. And it's a much bigger group too, so it's. You know, industry sectors, healthcare, ag, energy, the mayors are also members, so all three city mayors. Are there, I believe where we have, I think our camp, I think we have thirteen will be here in person, but it is open to the public. If you. Wish to. Come and watch. It's. Always fun. It's always, it is actually fun. It's a good, it's a good group. With that, I had a motion to have a second, you know, I have a motion of the second to adjourn the regular meeting until eight AM on Thursday. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, say aye. Aye, motion passed. We are adjourned.